So this, this, um, this discussion came about because there's an issue on the table. Just in conversation, shall I say, and I'm in the town. And various bodies are going to at some point be discussing this. And I just thought, instead of each of us going to each of the players that have any knowledge of this issue, um, going and taking time from those individuals that we would all just sit and, um, get the same information at one time. And so, um, this is not a subcommittee meeting of the town council or of the Park and Rec Commission, or the Police Commission, or any, anything else that might have any conversation with this issue. But I know there are a couple of us, um, you know, that have very specific questions. And, um, maybe the best way to start would be with Allison. Can you just give us an, at least from my perspective, just what, what is the animal shelter? Cause I don't think people really know where it is, what kind of activity we have, whatever, you know?
Uh, sure. So we are mandated by the state to have some sort of an animal control presence, depending on the size of the town. Um, New Canaan technically does not need a facility because of the population. So that's something that could probably be researched. The facility is utilized to take in stray animals. Uh, and that could consist of from roosters to guinea pigs to cats and dogs. Um, I've had wildlife in there. There's all sorts of creatures. You never know if you're going to get a snake. You never know if you're going to have a, you know, of a case of hamsters left on the side of the road. So we always have to be prepared. That means having all the kinds of cages and food sources and everything that's needed, depending on what animal might come through. We impound approximately 50 animals a year in New Canaan. Comparatively to larger, when I was in Greenwich, it was 150 animals. Uh, so the, um, there's, you just never know when that call is going to come. The average animal that comes in is of course canines. The average stay is probably about six hours. The PD here is, works very closely with me. And if they want to release a dog at 8:00 PM to, to someone, they will. And then the dog doesn't have to spend the night. We average maybe in my six years, almost six years here, maybe one animal a year that becomes unclaimed. Um, and I work quickly with agencies, welfare agencies in the area to put that animal in their hands when their legal time is up. We must hold a dog, cat for 10, uh, sorry, seven days. And then the animal can be transferred to an animal welfare agency, or I can place it myself. How's that?
Allison, a quick question. Do, when people pick up their, their dogs or animals, do they pay the $15?
Yes, 99% of the time, yes.
Okay. So that is required, but okay.
It is, it's state law.
Mandated by the state.
What's the average, um, time of the, a dog would stay in the shelter? Did you say that? I may have missed it.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's approximately six hours. Um, you know, that's, that's a ballpark. Some people call right away. You know, it, it, some people takes, you know, several hours to realize their dog is missing.
Right. Uh, and over the course of a year, how many dogs have been sheltered? Well, what's the typical volume for the year or a month?
Because again, I could take in a rabbit, a cat. Um, it's approximately 50.
Uh, and let me talk about the, the condition of the current shelter, right? I haven't been in it, but can you just, what, what is your opinion and description of it at this time?
Sure. I mean, it is certainly decrepit, um, but adequate because it remains empty 99% of the time. Now this situation where we seize 12 dogs is, you know, it's sort of a once in a career kind of thing in, in our area, um, although I've done it before, but the, um, you know, so now we're pressured to make, as I say, a sow's ear into a purse. Um, and we're doing the best we can with, um, the heating is the biggest problem. Um, we have, uh, that, but the building is, you know, in trouble, I think. Tiger could, you know, talk to you better about that.
Tiger, what's your?
Allison.
Sorry.
This is Christina. Um, I just wanted to understand, why would it be if we only hold the animals for seven days and then turn them over? Why would that bring a sense of emergency to create uh, an animal control facility that differs from the one we have? I'm not talking about not updating the one we have, but why look at another place? And, and why for seven days, look into something more permanent and possibly larger?
Uh, you know, I certainly wouldn't, couldn't, wouldn't consider larger, but I really think Tiger should talk about the, the structure of the building and its, and its future.
Well, I, I have one question. You're saying decrepit. Is that the exterior of the building or the inside where the shelter is?
The inside as well. There's, there's, you know, there's crumbling concrete. The ceiling tiles are.
And when would you like to bring this to our attention? Since that's the first I've heard of it. I've been in that structure. It didn't look bad to me. I was in there last month.
Yeah, no, there's.
Next time, next time I, before, before statements made like that, I'd like to have, I'd like to have prior notice.
Sure.
The building itself is 50, is, is 1950s vintage. It's an old transfer. It's an old incinerator building. So the exterior building needs to be done, but in my, my, I've never heard that the inside is decrepit. But I'm, I'm, I'm a little, uh, not happy about that statement. The, uh, but the building itself is a 1950s incinerator that we, that was retrofitted in order.
Some of the cracked concrete, um, my, my.
The, uh, so, and the heating, we put in adequate heating this year. We're putting in a low alarm, low temperature alarm in there as well. Yes, we've had issues in the past with, with heating since it's a entire, basically one large building with no insulation in it. You know, so it's a void, but, uh, I think we've had heating issues just several times a year at best. But we just put in a new heating system that, and I haven't heard any issues as of, as of yet with it. But, you know, our thought was eventually I'm going to have to do something with that building. And to have an animal control building in that building is, to me, is not worthy. If I gotta put a new roof on there and then re-point the existing structure and do other things with it, why am I, why am I putting money into this building? I should just knock it down. In essence, it should have been knocked down when the, when the second incinerator was built. And that incinerator should have been knocked down when the highway department was built. So all we're doing is just tripping over ourselves constantly with, with this, you know, the, uh, at the time, it was going to be a million dollars to knock down the transfer station or the, the incinerator building in order to put the highway garage share when we went to a transfer station. And it wasn't done because the monies needed to look compatible during the swap. That's my understanding. And they weren't. So it was red penciled out, red penned out. And now we're living with it. And so I've got a building that's from 1950s. I got another building that's from 1970s. Both of them are incinerators and both of them should in essence be removed. And then we can then put something more adequate there, a, a better salt shed, a swap shop. If you want to put an animal control building there, that platform, that area would be ripe for reuse. Right now, we're, we're making the best of a bad situation. We've been doing it for 20 years. Eventually, it's just, eventually it's just going to fall on us, you know? And I got a highway garage directly below it, you know? So that's my thought is I'm just trying to get ahead of it. You know, so, you know, we don't need to remove the, or move the animal control shelter. It was just a thought of, okay, we have a building at Kiwanis. Do you want to think about putting it there? Just to give her a better situation, a better location, you know, than, than being smack dab in the middle of our operations. Then that opens up the fact that I don't have anybody in that building. And if I want to knock it down on itself, then I gain that area back as a small step towards, you know, the other one. That's all that, you know, it's not a, it's not imperative. She doesn't have to move. You know, we're not kicking her out by any stretch of the imagination. It's more along the lines of when I'm asked to look at the roof of that building, do I want to spend 75 to a hundred thousand dollars on the roof of that building? Versus, you know, to house her or to then look at, let's spend 75 to a hundred thousand dollars on a better location, you know, or a better building, not necessarily even a better location. I don't have a problem with animal control being in our facility. I have a problem with the building that it's in. That's, that's really where it's at, you know? The, uh, and it's, and it's not her fault. It's just a question of, you know, it, it is the situation that it is, you know?
Tiger, can I just?
Sure.
Um, is Kiwanis the only location that you have open or are there other locations?
We haven't, we, we haven't looked at any other location, Christina, to be honest with you. I mean, apart from putting it into the police department, you know, at that time, but that will be determined by the building committee of the police department, you know? Other, um, you know, originally Allison was run out of the recreation department and then it moved to the police department. So it kind of, she's, she, you know, she, she got shifted around. Her department got shifted around, but originally it was out of recreation. And then, you know, um, that's why it was placed, she was placed over at, uh, over at the incinerator. But, you know, you can, can look for other areas. We just haven't looked at other areas. We don't really have a building or an area where it would be suitable. Let's put it that way. We thought about Irwin in the garage, things like that, but that's not going to work either.
What about Irwin in the apartment on the barn?
The apartment, the barn, no, the barn's full of storage. This, it wouldn't work.
In the apartment also?
The apartment is, uh, is, is utilized by our buildings maintenance department. Um, you know, our town buildings department. So, but we, you know, we did look at, we did look at those areas. It's just not, I think it's a, I think there are better uses, proposed uses or even unproposed uses for Irwin, areas around Irwin. And, you know, Kiwanis came up only because it was, it was empty. Used to be the animal control officer's apartment. It's kind of a nice synergy there, you know? But it was not a, it was not mandated by any stretch of the imagination. It was more a, more a thought to then try to get some positive movement on the thought of, you know, looking at the area, my area of concern, which is that corner of the transfer station. That, uh, you know, that, that, that area of, I guess, my entire facility, right? So I have a concern with those buildings. And they're just, you know, I don't want to spend money on a, on something that, you know, it was a stopgap measure at, at the time, you know? So why would I spend money on a stopgap measure? Why don't I do something that's, you know, in keeping?
So Tiger, if I can, sorry Tiger, if I can understand what you're saying. Number one, the animal shelter itself being there, is it impeding your operation?
No, that's what I said. She doesn't have to go. And even in, even if we, if we took down the building and I had that platform of area, I could. You know, a prefab structure right there. She doesn't have to, it's not ending or injuring us by any stretch of the imagination. I don't know if it hinders her, but it doesn't hinder us. I don't like, or just the, the building itself, when we were asked to look at the building and I had to come forward and say, well, I need a new roof. It's $75,000 minimum, right? And then I should be looking at repointing the outside and redoing the windows just to keep it. So it's, you know? And then the perennial problems that we have whereby she's in a, just a large structure that doesn't have any insulation, doesn't have anything, and she's kind of stuffed in there, right? So it's been a perennial problem for forever. It's not her fault. It's just a situation that we're in. So why would I continue that? Why would I put $75,000 onto a structure that if I knocked her down and spent the money better, I'd get brand new structure. It's not a 1950s vintage. I'd get rid of the fact that it's an old incinerator and I'd put her in a building that was, that was designed for an animal control shelter, right? It's, this is not designed for an animal control shelter. It was just stuffed in there. You know, you try to put the pens in, you try to do what you can do, but it's really just to make, it was a make do, right?
What do you, what do you think? Um, so basically, if it were to be knocked down and you could do a prefab structure and run your electric heating, I get basically plumbing, I guess, would need. Is there plumbing in the building now? Are there lines out there or no?
Yeah. Yeah. We have everything. Everything's right there, you know?
What's the square footage, by the way? I'm sorry, of the current building? What's the square footage? Oh, you don't know? Okay.
No, I'm sorry. I don't know that.
That's fine. Uh, I mean, I'll probably shoot out there at some point to take a look.
Yeah.
So, okay. So basically, what I'm understanding you're saying is it doesn't make sense to really spend any money to work structurally on it, given its current condition and that it's a stopgap measure. And if anything, you don't oppose the location, but to spend another penny to upgrade, that really just doesn't make sense. And that perhaps the better idea is to, unless we could find somewhere else in town that doesn't break the bank, so to speak, the better option maybe to consider is knocking what down what's there and considering a cost effective option, like a prefab structure. And try to have it some kind of, you know, basic design for the fit of what it's needed. The actual, um, operation for an animal shelter type scenario. Is, is that kind of what you're saying or am I wrong?
Yeah. No, you're pretty much hitting her right on the head. It's just, you know, I, we have no problem with her being there, with the operation being there. It's just, you know, forever we run through this, the exact same problem. It's, it's just not, you know? And that now, it, it wasn't really a problem until I started looking at having to repair the building. Right? Now we're at that point where, okay, what do you do? So last year, we actually had it in the capital plan to put a new roof on. And I said, well, let's take that out because I'm not going to advocate spending $75,000 on a new roof on a building that I actually really want to take down. So let's start about taking it down. And that, that was a discussion from last year. And then, uh, and at that point in time, we tabled it. You know, and that, now, you know, and here, here we are, you know?
So, sorry Tiger, I have a question for Allison. Um, we don't actually have to have, because of the size of our town, an animal shelter, correct?
Uh, correct. I believe that's, uh, in the statutes. Yes. I think it has to be, um, uh, 25,000 or more is required to have a facility.
Okay. And that's why Darian doesn't have the facility?
Correct. They have a grandfathered, um, relationship with a veterinarian in Norwalk.
Right. With the animal, Norwalk Animal Hospital.
Correct.
So, and, and the issue that the town is having now is that you take dogs, if, if you have one more than seven days, you would take it to, uh, welfare, animal welfare, probably like, uh, work with strays and others?
Um, yeah, strays and others, Claudia generally deals with cats. So no, I, I would work with Roar, Westport Humane Society, Paws in Norwalk.
Right, something like that. But the issue right now is that the, the puppies currently are evidence, right? And that's what the town's working to get custody of?
Yes, we were granted full custody yesterday. Yay.
Oh, you were?
We were.
Yay. So they can go home now.
So, no, unfortunately, keep in mind, there's a 20-day appeal hold.
Oh, okay. Okay. But that is good news.
That is good news.
My question to you is, is could we have maybe like a hybrid situation? Cause I know right, like if someone wants to pick up their dog at eight o'clock at night, the police will have to drive over to the transfer station, let the person in and then come back. Could there be, if there's a new police station, a hybrid situation where there are a few hens in the animal control office? And then if there's longer term, we do something with, say, like Norwalk Animal Hospital, like Darian does?
We could certainly approach, uh, uh, we, we approached an animal hospital here in New Canaan, New Canaan Vet. And that, uh, are you there? I'm sorry, my, my phone came in. That did not prove to be affordable. You know, they wanted to rent their space to us. Um, I believe it was $3,500 a month. I'll be honest with you, the odds of another facility, uh, like a, a Norwalk Animal Hospital wanting to do this for another outside agency is probably slim. I mean, it can certainly be approached.
Okay. Because Darian just pays $35. They just pay, uh, like a $35 overnight fee.
Right. They have, yeah, they have one run. Chip is the only one. Chip is the ACO there. He has the key. Um, he would get called out at eight o'clock at night or whatever. If, if the, the PD relationship is quite different than, um, we have with, uh, our officers here. And Greenwich was similar. Once the ACO was off duty, the office, police officers take over. So Darian has a very unique relationship.
Robin, it's Rana. I think your idea is a good one. I think that because of the rarity of someone, you know, going to pick up their dogs. I've actually been in the shelter when I became involved with Parks and Rec and then toured it again because a friend of mine was in the city and her dogs got loose. So I had to go to the police station at eight o'clock at night, follow the officer over to where the animal shelter currently is. Dogs were fine. Dogs were in their environment. There was water, blankets, leashes, the kitchenette. So I must agree, you know, with Tiger, how it is now is working. The one thing missing during that time was the heat. So to hear that the heat issue has been rectified, I think it's a good one. But I think an on-call vet for those rare situations of 12 dogs or an overnight, and then simply just charge the person. When I picked up the two dogs of a friend, I had to pay the fee at the police station. Just raise the fee for the, you know, inconvenience in the storage of the dog or animal.
The, the $15 fee is, I think, set by the state.
Ah.
Is that right, Allison?
Yes, yes. We, we can charge, um, we can charge a boarding fee, absolutely. Um, and I believe the $35 goes directly to the animal hospital, uh, in Norwalk. So the person is not only paying the 15, but paying an additional boarding fee. Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah. Chip, I spoke with Chip and he said what they do in Darian is that you have to go to the police station, you have to show rabies vaccine, vaccine certificate. You have to pay the $15 and then you have to pay for each, the boarding each night it's been there. And then they give you a certificate and then you can go to Norwalk and pick up your animal.
And, and keep in mind that my office is at the PD as well. So in, in that same scenario, you know, I have to meet you here and then you follow me down. Uh, so that's, that's just the way it's been set up here for, for decades now.
If there is an animal shelter in a park, um, which isn't locked up at night, is there concern about dumping?
Uh, I would have concern about that, especially Kiwanis, because there's a perfectly fenced in area that, um, could, you know, safely hold a dog overnight. I would be concerned about that. My, my big concern about Kiwanis is, is it in a flood zone? I have not been told yes or no, but if it is in a flood zone, then that should be completely ruled out because we would not put a facility that potentially could be an emergency facility, um, in a flood zone.
Well, it's not, but according to your guidelines, it's not allowed. We're looking at that now. You know, but the, but it wouldn't be allowed. Again, they, you know, I think a lot of the discussions got taken way out of the box, way early, you know? You, in my opinion, you ask a question and then before you can even get an answer, it's, it's running, you know? So, but we will look at that. We, in that wouldn't, as, as you mentioned, Allison, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing that if it, if that's the case.
Tiger, is there any way, if you were to knock down what's there, uh, we put something else up? You know, a new structure, prefab or whatever, is there a way we could, um, it could be dual use where there could be a component of the square footage dedicated to the animal shelter? And then there's something that you, your department can utilize, whether it be a, you know, storage or something? Is there any possibility of that? Or it, you couldn't be able to shoehorn both in?
Well, in this, in this year's budget, I put in $50,000 for a basically an feasibility study for this, I'm calling it a feasibility study for the salt barn, right? Cause that's, our, our salt is right next to it, right? In the, the newer incinerator building, let's put it that way. So the thought is that, take a look at it, real it, and then see what can I fit and where, right? Cause I wouldn't want to then knock down the one building, have the other one next to it, drop something in for her and then run a room for something else, either a swap shop or an additional salt dome. My opinion is that if we, if we look at it holistically, especially that corner, it's about the only area that I have left, right? In the entire facility, because the rest of it's a capped landfill. It's technically deeded over as a park. Yeah. And then I got my wastewater plant down below. There's additional area for the wastewater if they need to expand in the future planned. And then the highway department is shoehorned in there in and of itself, right? So there's not a lot of room left. Have that one corner in play. And the thought was that, can I get these competing interests together in one spot? So yes, that's my overall goal is to see if I can utilize that area, swap shop, animal control, salt dome. Call it a day, right? And then be done. But that's, so I put $50,000 in there and we, we're calling it a go, no go, right? Really where it's at. So go, no go. And then, and then at that point in time, then we'll take it further. But, you know, that, that's the overall thought. And I, you know, I'm trying to push off spending any money on the building, uh, the animal control building at present, just because, uh, you know, I don't want to put much, good money after bad.
I mean, that seems ideal to me, rather than come up with a plan to have a, a shelter that would be rarely used based on these statistics, uh, and plopped into maybe Kiwanis, which then becomes another liability for the town to operate that independently as a shelter. To heat it, cool it, make sure it's clean, someone's watching it all the time. Whereas if what you're contemplating, which I mean, it seems, seems like a great idea. To me, seems the way to go, but that's my opinion.
Well, thank you. That's really, really just the, you know, the, um, you know, like I said, you know, you kind of bit a little bit before you even get a chance to, wait a minute, let's go take a look at that, right? Um, like, you know, you know, the overall thought is that, you know, um, I don't disagree with Allison that, you know, she shoehorned in there, right? It's, we made the best of the bad situation and we continue to do that every year, right? So I'm just trying to look at it holistically, take a step back and look at it holistically, you know? You know, I, we've had a request for a swap shop for, gosh, I don't know, six years, seven years. I really don't even know. And I keep saying, I don't have the room. Well, I'm trying to make the room, you know, because I think it's a good idea. You know, and the salt shed for us, it works, but we work with it. It doesn't work for us about that, right? You know, I mean, like we're kind of making the best there, you know? So my thought is, let's get rid of these liabilities that we have and give us something that will work for everybody. You know?
Right.
So that's where it's at.
The salt trucks can't even get into the salt shed, right?
Right. Have to dump on the outside, push it in, you know? And, uh, you can actually look up and see where some have actually hit. They've gone in too far and then hit the structure and so, and, you know, and, um, eventually that's the, the salt. Salt itself is going to eat the building alive, right? If you can imagine, because the, the, the air itself in there, it's just going to eat, it's starting to eat the building alive. And it wasn't designed for it, you know, it was designed as an incinerator. We're, we're making the best of it, you know? It's a, you know, so that, that's really, you know? We have a good handle on this about everything else. It's the one spot that we don't.
And you don't get a full load of salt, right? Or something in that?
No, we get a full load. It's just to dump on the outside, then the loader pushes it in, right? So I'm in, you know, the normal trucks, but it's just a question, he can't go in, in a normal salt dome. They come in, dump inside, turn around and come back out again, right? And then the truck will, truck gets loaded inside. Everything's done inside. We load outside, you know, so we go into it, pick it up, come outside and dump it, right? And we even had concerns at the time that the loader wouldn't necessarily fit inside with all the columns that are in there. And the guy has to do a really nice job of dancing around the columns that are in there without hitting them. Thankfully, we have a, we have an excellent operator.
Is the relationship with, um, the, the police department, the relate, the, the correct relationship? I mean, you know, years ago was the animal with Park and Rec, and I didn't quite understand why Park and Rec. Was it because the animal control officer lived in the house? Is, is that why?
Well, the animal control officer was part of the PD. No, I, I don't know. It's, it was with, under Steve. Steve said it was underneath recreation. It might've been that, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the patrolling was done in the parks. I, I don't know. I don't have an answer for that.
I think Rana's probably trying to decide too. I think Rana's probably trying to decide too.
Right, it was uh, yeah, it was pre-Allison's time too, so she wouldn't necessarily know, I can ask Steve exactly the genesis of it, but.
And it certainly feels like a better fit for the police department.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's middle of the night pickup or drop off, or found a dog, or any kind of animal issue, and. I think Michael hit it on the head, if we can analyze the use of that building, do your study, figure out how that goes, see what happens with the police station in the meantime, if. There's a future plan of that, I mean, ideal circumstances would be, my dog gets loose, I go to the police station, I pay the fee and I get my dog right there. And Allison is housed there, um, but I do think throwing money at something that's, you know, working, and so rarely used would be a mistake. So, um, yeah, I think making sure Allison's comfortable and, and the animals are comfortable, which it appears they are. And uh, unusual, like she said, once in a career, uh, lifetime of having twelve dogs. I think we see what the two studies come up with, see what police department, see what Tiger study for that building, and maybe go from there.
Right. Yeah, I only raised it because, you know, when you, when there has been a history, you want to just make sure that you're going in the right direction before you go in another direction, you know? So, I, I would agree with you, um, uh, the animal shelter, I opened up the um. Building uh, report is eight hundred square feet.
Thank you.
So we're not talking about, you know, huge, um, huge area.
I think it's important to keep in mind that we're not just talking dogs. Uh, you know, I, as I said, I've had roosters, guinea hens, um, I'm not sure the police department is going to be welcoming roosters, guinea hens. Um, and, and we have developed um, a, a concept in New Canaan that we, you know, we care for all animals. And I, I want to be able to have the right facility to take in, you know, a bunny that's been abandoned, or um, a, a loose rooster, whatever the case is. Um, so that's, I mean, certainly a holding pen for convenience for the police officers, but an entire. Shelter facility within the police department, that, that's going to be an architectural feat.
You also uh, need uh, capability to um, refrigerate carcasses that get sent off to um. For additional testing and so forth, right?
Correct, correct.
Right. Right.
Has anyone gone down the path of nature center, knowing that there's animals and, you know, refrigeration and sort of a lab setup? Just throwing it out there.
Again, it's another, it's another stop, it's another, um, you know, a place for officers might take in a bat at eight o'clock at night that needs testing. I guess they could go to the nature center as well as they could go down to the facility to put the bat in the refrigerator for the night. Um. You know, it's, there's a lot of little nuances that, that take place that are really hard to explain. Um, but, you know, sheltering animals is, is, is an art as well as a science.
The nature center has a lease with the town, so, um, for Bliss Park. So I, I guess that would be up to the nature center if they wanted, but I don't think they're under any obligation.
Any more questions that we all have?
Um, I just, just because it's been out there in the public, people have been talking about a private-public partnership, um. About funding, you know, raising money for a new animal shelter. Um, Allison, you were on the board, you are a founding member of the Shelter Our Strays in Greenwich, right?
Correct.
Um, can you give us any information? Because I think that's the only one in the area that was, uh. You know, Roar in Richfield is a nonprofit, it, it's not affiliated with Richfield, same with Paws in Norwalk. But um, Shelter Our Strays is actually the Greenwich Animal Control, right?
Uh, yes, we, we developed the private um, public fundraising, I think it took seven years. Um, in the end, I believe the shelter, don't quote me, but it was approximately a million dollars to build. Um, I happened to leave right at the time they broke ground, uh, but it was, um, it was a ten-year project, I know, with the Bruce Museum. Um, and then seven years or so to raise the funds.
It was, so I, I spoke to Sherry, um.
Wordy.
So she, she's good, she said it was about nine hundred thousand dollars raised with nine hundred thousand dollars matched by the town.
There you go.
Nine and nine? That was nine hundred and nine hundred?
Yep. I, I, that's what she is recalling, I can't confirm that right now, but that's what she said, um.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's been a while, uh, you know, it was, um, certainly we don't need the facility that we built in Greenwich.
A, a near two million dollar facility, I mean, that's, that's one very. High-class facility.
I, I would wait to confirm those numbers, I mean, I was just having a phone call with someone on the board.
Yeah, I, I kind of think it was, it was a million in the end, and that was, um, you know, with a large um, outdoor pen and, and landscaping, and there was a lot more involved. In those bottom dollars, if I recall, um, but it, it was around a million.
But the fact is, is that by statute, Greenwich needed to have one, New Canaan doesn't, and it's not required. We should look into perhaps doing it with another small town, or subleasing space from Stanford or Norwalk. To accommodate that very small amount of the animal population that we need to shelter.
So leaving jurisdiction is a liability issue? Um, if a police officer picks up a dog at six PM and has to drive to Stanford with that dog, opens the door, it gets out and gets killed, yikes.
But aren't we, wouldn't we be insured, I mean, if, if the ambulance goes to Norwalk or Stanford, isn't there a liability in that?
I, I don't, I don't know what their procedures are, but, you know, it's, it's, leaving jurisdiction routinely, you know, could, could be an issue. And there, a, a regional study is being done right now, West Cog is doing a regional study, and I'm on, on that committee, I think. Um, and uh, they're, they're looking into what towns could conceivably merge. Um, and what towns need a new facility, uh, Wilton does, Weston does, Bethel does, New Canaan does, so that's in process now.
So what, one of your things though is that some of the animals that you have to bring in can't go to somewhere like Norwalk, animal, like Darian does, like, um. When I was at there one time, there was just sheep, there were like three sheep that had just been there.
Um, sheep in Darian?
No, in, at, at New Canaan, when I was there, visiting one time.
Um, I don't recall having sheep. I had, we had a sheep investigation, but I didn't take them into custody.
Oh, when I went on tour, I thought you said that there were some sheep that got, someone had sheep in town.
Yes, but, yeah, but I, that, that was an investigation, I wasn't.
Oh, I thought you said that you brought them to the animal.
Oh, no, no, when that, when that happens, I'm, I'm, I'm retiring, when I have to house sheep in, in that facility, we're in trouble. Yeah, no, that's when I would probably call the nature center and say, help.
Okay, so that's not something you would make in any way, okay?
Uh, no, not, not, not if I don't have to, and, you know, we, we would look for mutual aid in those cases.
So I think there are a couple takeaways, number one, West Cog is doing a study, have a. Possibility of a regional facility to address this issue. And secondly, uh, Tiger is requesting funding for, you know, professional analysis of this. Yeah, of the, of the salt dome.
Right. Do you, Allison, yes, Allison, you know when that plan is, when that West Cog study is going to be done?
I have no idea, I have not heard from them recently, um, I can certainly reach out and ask. They were gathering lots of stats from all the animal controls in, in our, in this region, the West Cog region.
That'd be great. Everybody good?
Good, I think so.
I'm happy to give a tour to anybody um, who still needs one.
What's happening with the dogs now, Allison, now that, I mean, assuming that post-seven days, we have to, um. You know?
The current puppies, you mean?
Yeah, the current puppies.
The current puppies, keep in mind, um, I farmed out uh, seven of the dogs, so we are only housing five. Um, we now hold them for twenty additional days, hoping that the defendant does not appeal. If there's an appeal, this could go on for a very long time, they'll grow up at the shelter. Um, we cannot do anything to them, we can't give them out, we can't, I can't spay them, I can only make sure that they're medically sound. Um, until we, uh, February tenth is our, is our deadline. After February tenth, we have a good list um, of people ready to adopt.
Great.
Let's see, so at that point in time, if she doesn't appeal at the twenty-day mark or what have you, you have people that would take over, take them in?
Um, I, I, well, we, I think we have enough, um, I will give custody to the other shelter that has the seven. And they will make decisions on their own for those seven, um, we, we will make decisions on the five that we have here. Uh, and there's quite a waiting list for those five. So they'll get adopted.
But if she appeals, it could be another year or more.
It could, it could be a nightmare, yes.
Yeah, and they have to stay in the New Canaan shelter because they're evidence.
Correct. Now, if we were to.
Police can walk them, right, because of insurance?
Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, they're, they're not even leash and collar trained, um, so, you know, they, I would not risk that. Um, the, you know, the, if, if I get a really nice day, I may take that little courtyard and bring them out for a little air, but. Um, they're doing very well, very well. Penny was there, you could, you saw them, right Penny?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Good. Be good?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for bringing us.
This has been very helpful, we'll uh, look forward to hearing from um, reports back on what West Cog may be doing and, and um. Go through the budget process with Tiger.
Thanks for bringing us together, Penny.
Yeah, thanks Penny.
Thank you.
Okay.